...to order. When you're speaking tonight, speak a little bit louder just because of the size of the room. This is a little bigger than we're used to. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lee, would you take the role? Collins here. Coyle here. Eiker.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Patrice.
Here.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here.
Owen. Here. Okay, we're going to begin tonight with 207's Best, and this month it is for academic achievement. And we will start with Maine South, Dr. Kressler.
Hi, everybody. Welcome. It is my pleasure to introduce Anthony Benning. Please give him a round of applause. So Anthony is, by all accounts, a really extraordinary young individual, as I'm sure we're going to hear a lot tonight. But it's the first time that I've ever had a school counselor come to me in many years as a principal doing 207's Best, advocating, saying, "No, no, you really need to select this student. He is amazing." So I'm going to read a bit and kind of give you a little combo platter of what many of his teachers have had to say. So throughout his time at South, Anthony has consistently demonstrated a strong commitment to learning and academic excellence, building an impressive resume that not only shows his admirable grades, but captures his hard work and his passion for knowledge. He approaches learning situations with a deep sense of curiosity, diligence, and enthusiasm. He's a natural leader both in and out of the classroom, able to navigate complex ideas and tasks, surpass given expectations, and partake in meaningful conversations that enhance the learning of those around him. Along with his numerous Advanced Placement courses over the past four years, he's involved in a number of extracurriculars: C-Team, the Constitution Team, Southwards, Mock Trial Team, DECA, which is the Distributive Education Club of America, varsity tennis, National Honor Society, and HAWK Pride. In our greater community, he's an intern at the Avondale Restorative Justice Community Court, and he's a tutor at Math Nasium. Additionally, Anthony's won a variety of notable awards that further represent his dedication to learning and success. He's been named as a Central Suburban League Scholar-Athlete, received the IHSA Scholastic Achievement Award, and the AP Scholar of Distinction Award, Academic Excellence Award of Science in AP Biology, and the Academic Excellence Award of Science in AP Physics. I think as we go through, you're going to hear consistent themes about always present, very, very collaborative, willing to do the work himself, but also kind of reaching around and bringing others along with him. And I think specifically, we're going to hear a little bit about what he's done in various of the extracurriculars, but the reason he's been so successful in the extracurriculars is because he's got all the building blocks and the chops academically in the classroom. I would also just say anecdotally, if we were really going to talk about class rank and GPA, he's right up there in a very competitive group of very capable scholars here at Maine South. Andy Trinkle, who's a social science teacher and is coach for C-Team, says, "He's a super student who cares deeply about learning, taking the hardest possible coursework. In an age where people understandably perhaps often want to get the most for the least effort, Anthony takes pride in pushing himself to be enrolled in elite courses and programs. I admire his commitment and unrivaled excellence in my AP European History class, his role in making the mock trial team a state champion for the first time ever, and his rigorous intellectual commitment to the C-Team." Christine Headley, one of our English teachers, said, "Anthony's intellect is evident daily in AP Literature and Composition, whether he's sharing about which part of Shakespeare's Hamlet cracked him up, or whether he is articulating a well-reasoned analysis of complexities Tony Morrison's beloved. His daily contributions to our class elevate the discourse. However, what has impressed me most is Anthony's willingness to seek ways to engage his classmates to join in our many conversations. His emotional intelligence is just as strong as his intellect. With his combination of academic prowess and interpersonal awareness, I believe Anthony is destined for even more success in his bright future." Talking a little bit about DECA, Amy Clodus is a business education teacher, one of our DECA sponsors, said, "Anthony is one of our outstanding DECA members. Last March, Anthony and his partner achieved an impressive third place in the Business Law and Ethics category to Illinois DECA State Competition. Their success landed them an invitation to compete at the prestigious DECA International Competition in Orlando. This was a fantastic opportunity for him to showcase his skills on an international platform, gain invaluable experience. Anthony's dedication to DECA, all his academic pursuits, and outstanding achievements are a testament to his hard work." The last thing I want to share is from his varsity tennis coach, Gerald Smith. Said, "I've had the pleasure to be Anthony's tennis coach for the past three years. He's extremely motivated, and being one of the most competitive players I have ever coached, he continues to compete at the highest level. This dedication correlates to his success academically. His ability to manage all of his passions and still go above and beyond in the classroom is truly remarkable. I think that Anthony is more than deserving for the Academic Achievement Award." I think in my bit of conversation, a chance to chat with him a little bit before break, didn't necessarily in the comments shared by teachers, but he is like quite the mathematician. And I think he loves math, and in addition to all of these things, I think he really intends to go and study math and probably make that the cornerstone of whatever lies in front of him business-wise, whatever that may be. But he is, by all accounts, an extraordinary human being, and we are very proud of him, and undoubtedly makes us a better school for all involved. So congratulations. Who's here with you tonight?
Both my parents are here with me. They're sitting right there in the front row, and I just want to thank them in front of everyone because since a young age, they've pushed me. And even when I didn't want to do the work, they've instilled in me from a young age that I should work hard. So really, all the credit goes to them for everything that they've pushed me to do.
What's your plan next year?
I plan to major in Mathematical, Economics, Sport Finance, depending on the school. I haven't heard back from any schools yet, so it'll be a three-to-four-month wait, but I'm sure excited.
As I spoke to him today in the hallway, he said he was just really happy because he was done with all of the applications. So a weight has been lifted. But again, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll move along to Maine East. Dr. Pyke.
Karina, you want to join us up here? This month, Maine East is proud to announce that Karina Gao is our 207's Best in the area of academic achievement. Karina's academic resume is extraordinary. The beautiful collage of A's in college-level courses is just one of many pieces of evidence of Karina's brilliance. Alan Ibrahimovic, Karina's counselor, shared with me that Karina is one of the strongest students in her graduating class, and arguably, one of the strongest in my tenure at Maine East. She has consistently taken the most rigorous courses we offer in every academic department, and often taken these courses at least ahead of most other students. For two years in a row, she's taken virtual PE so that she can pack her schedule with seven or eight academic courses because she has an insatiable desire to learn. Karina is always a pleasure to interact with and is very deserving of this award for all of her academic success. Karina described herself as a very shy student early in her learning journey, but credits book talks, presentations, and musicals for pushing her out of her shell and exploring her true potential. It was obvious by the time she entered high school that her passion was all things STEM-related, and she hasn't looked back. Karina has a particular interest in computer science and engineering, and is grateful for her cybersecurity and civil engineering courses for allowing her to explore talents that she would not have unveiled in other courses. In just a few minutes of talking with Karina, my assumption was confirmed that there are probably too many academic achievements to squeeze into this write-up. So I asked her to tell me about what she perceives as her greatest accomplishment. Karina described her passion for cybersecurity and told me that, in addition to all of her school commitments, she engages in Girls Who Code and a variety of cybersecurity hackathons. In a recent hackathon competition, Karina won the highest distinction, a scholarship to take a cybersecurity certification exam. Karina is very excited to pursue the certification exam. Talk about a resume builder. This past summer, Karina had an opportunity to further explore engineering as she was admitted to the prestigious Johns Hopkins Summer Program for exceptional students. There, she was exposed to various engineering disciplines, and again, computer science proved to be of particular interest. Karina had a chance to work on a prototype medication holder that would systematically advance to the next days with accurate timing and dosing. As you'd expect, Karina's teachers have certainly noticed her talents in the classroom. Mr. Dobner, Karina's AP Health teacher, shared that Karina is a phenomenal student and a wonderful person. I've been blessed to have her in class for two years, and have also been able to work with her on math team. She is without question one of the strongest students in her class, and has distinguished herself by rising to the challenge of the most rigorous content. It has been a privilege to watch her grow into an impressive problem solver and a deep analytical thinker. I am delighted that Karina is being recognized as one of 207's Best. She certainly deserves this honor. Mr. Peters taught Karina in multiple AP Social Science courses. She's a model of consistency and hard work in the classroom. Karina is meticulous in her preparation for class and holds herself to the highest standards. Karina is able to demonstrate her knowledge and intellectual curiosity with her ability to engage in high-level discussion with well-timed questions and show a desire to learn more about topics. It's truly been a pleasure working with Karina. Mrs. Mazanowski has gotten to see another side of Karina's intellect in accounting. What impresses me about Karina is that she pursues electives that will truly help her decide her future career pathway. Her interest lies in both business and engineering, so she's challenging herself with college-credit CTE courses in both fields. As our college accounting accelerated teacher, I'm impressed in Karina's ability to learn the rigorous content quickly, especially given the fact that she's not taken accounting one as most of her classmates have. I'm confident that Karina will be successful after she graduates and make Maine East proud in whatever path she chooses. Lastly, Mr. Greenwald can be credited with seeing Karina's cybersecurity talent develop over time. He shared that she has a beautiful, inquisitive nature and creative mind. Karina excelled in our cybersecurity learning environment that allowed her to highlight her problem-solving, analysis, and process-driven thinking. She could be counted on to dive deeper than the base expectations of our labs and simulations and bring out greater learning for herself and her classmates. Outside of the classroom, Karina has also found her stride and excelled. Her business team won second place at the Northern Illinois University Business Olympics during her junior year for an app idea that created a virtual community for individuals with disabilities. Karina also co-led the eight-person math team that qualified for state this year. Karina credits much of her success in high school to her strong role models and her friends that have supported and motivated her along the way. Karina encourages other high school students to try as many things as you can in high school. It all helps you grow. Clubs and community service will grow your confidence. In addition to her extremely rigorous schedule over the years, Karina has heated her own advice. She has participated in many clubs and is currently the Secretary of Student Council and an officer in National Honor Society and math team. Karina, thank you so much for all that you've contributed to Maine East. We can't wait to see what your future holds. Karina, can you share with us who's here with you tonight?
I'm here with my parents and my siblings.
Great. And what is your future plan?
I plan on studying computer science, and I'm still waiting to hear back from colleges.
Excellent. Congratulations, Karina.
We'll move along to Maine West. Dr. McMahon.
I am happy to introduce Sophia Vincent. Sophia Vincent is here tonight because she has done an outstanding job in all her classes. While she deserves credit for her exceptional academic record, Sophia is truly a standout at Maine West in the way she has woven her career interests into her academic and internship experiences throughout her last four years. As she discovered and rediscovered and reshaped her passion, she found opportunities in school and out to connect everyday activities to her broader sense of purpose. We honor her tonight not only because she has demonstrated noteworthy scholarship, but also because she's embarked on a journey of personal and professional learning that transcends a traditional transcript. She exemplifies the curiosity, collaboration, and reflection that are necessary for true scholarship, and that's why she is our honoree tonight. Sophia told me that she feels lucky to have always been interested in something that she could fashion into a career. Her passion is public health, where she sees a system that is broken and wants to find real solutions. Sophia has been able to take a broad perspective on healthcare as a field, and is especially interested in the intersections of multiple other fields that affect clinical care. She said, "There are so many paths to work on eradicating disease. Public health draws me because I see problems and I want to help. My internship helped me see the importance of policy, and I love that there is such a wide range of careers in healthcare. Most of my friends who want to go into medicine want to be physicians. I hope that when people learn more about public health and how important it is, they might share this interest in problem solving." Sophia learned about the breadth and complexity of her chosen field not only through her internship at the School-Based Health Center, where she mainly works on program outreach, but also through a variety of her classes here at West. As expected, she found applications to her interests in science classes like AP Bio and Anatomy and Physiology, and in some of her studies in math. But she described to me how her history classes connected her passions, recalling a poem about disease during the Industrial Revolution in AP Euro, and her History Day Project in APUSH that explored the origins of the field in public health, which shaped her understanding of the current state of her chosen field. She credits both her academic and experiential learning with helping her cultivate a true learner's mindset. I've been able to make mistakes, and so many people here will support me and help me recover from them. That support won't be as constant or accessible after I leave Maine West. Capitalizing on that support to prepare for her future demonstrates Sophia's understanding that true learning is both personal and social. Apart from her remarkable academic and career pursuits, Sophia has made an impact at Maine West through her devotion to the West Side Dance Company, in which she deeply values both learning from and teaching her peers, and orchestra, where she plays the viola and treasures her time with others in her section. She volunteers as a TA in multiple classes, notably AP Euro History, and it may be easier to list the honor societies that she is not in than the ones she is in, pitching in for fundraisers and activities to support the community. She represents the School-Based Health Center on the principal's leadership team, competes for Science Olympiad, and also serves on lead crew, in addition to devoting numerous hours to dance outside of school and teaching in her studio. Through it all, Sophia has the wisdom to attend to her own wellness. I take a step back in the midst of everything to be in the moment and enjoy the people with me. Sophia's teachers highlight her wisdom, kindness, and depth. Several commented upon how Sophia's presence in class has made their own experiences more meaningful. Mr. Krasinski, a Science Olympiad sponsor and AP Bio teacher and plus AP Anatomy and Physiology teacher, enthused about knowing Sophia for three years. "I'm so glad Sophia is getting this award. She's amazing. I met her during her sophomore year when she joined Science Olympiad coming out of the pandemic. Science Olympiad competitions always seem to conflict with her dance commitments, but she kept coming to practice, working on her own, and building her expertise in her chosen competitive field, anatomy and physiology." Sophia and I share a fascination for the human body, and it was no surprise when she arrived in my AP Phys class for junior year. She did exceptionally well in the class and competed with us at Science Olympiad again. The Science Olympiad event is designed as a team test, and Sophia took third place at regionals despite competing by herself. She's continued with Science Olympiad her senior year, has become a team leader, bringing more members to our group, but my favorite thing about Sophia is how much I've been able to see her confidence and personality grow since sophomore year. She's taking AP Biology with me, and she has a big smile on her face every day when she walks into class. Every time I check in with her group, she has a question about the material. Usually, she's looking for clarification on a challenging question, but most importantly, she has gained the confidence to ask if she's not sure. As a result, she's been very successful in a challenging class. I'm excited to see what the future holds for Sophia. Ms. Valdez's comments reflect the impact students have upon their teachers, perhaps without even knowing it. "I first met Sophia through a screen her freshman year. I never saw her face. After a few months, the option to go hybrid was given, and Sophia decided to attend classes in person. It was then that I really got to know Sophia and what a wonderful student and human being she was. I don't know if Sophia knows this or not, but she really made me feel seen in a time that was most stressful for teachers. I didn't know how I was going to teach orchestra, something that is 100% communal and interactive, through a screen, and my heart was breaking because I couldn't connect with the students. After a few weeks of being in a hybrid, Sophia came to me and said, 'You know, Ms. Valdez, I was ready to quit orchestra, but after being in person, I realized that I do enjoy it, and being here is so much better than home. I am glad that I'm staying in orchestra.'" Her honesty and kindness put in perspective that even though I had no idea what I was doing day-to-day teaching virtual orchestra, I could still be there for my students. "Sophia, I have watched you dance, play, and smile your way through some crazy times, and I'm so proud of you. Congratulations on your recognition, as well deserved." And Ms. Lannon, for whom Sophia's TA's in AP Euro, stopped just short of declaring Sophia her favorite. "Sophia is not just a phenomenal student, she is a wonderful and selfless person. When she was a sophomore in my Advanced Placement European History class, I was struck by her natural enthusiasm, sense of responsibility, intellect, and dedication to academic success. Her essays were insightful, and her progress was bursting with creativity and humor. The supportive relationships Sophia built with her classmates helped create a 'no judgment zone,' her words, in eighth-period Euro History, which enabled not only her own growth as a learner and a person, but also her classmates. Watching Sophia's maturation since then into the confident, open-minded, and compassionate young lady she is today has been a highlight of my past few years' teaching. Sophia brings her concern for others' well-being into everything she does, whether it is helping me out as my teaching assistant, instructing young dancers in her studio, or interning in the public health field. I am especially thrilled that Sophia is being recognized for her academic excellence, because I know that in the future, she will apply her formidable skills with great empathy in order to better her, community, and the world." And finally, while so many more teachers shared insights about Sophia, Mr. Walsh struggled to restrict himself to just a paragraph, so I feel I owe it to him to include what he wrote. "I am so happy that Sophia is being recognized as one of 207's Best. It is such an understatement, considering what she has added to my classes over the last two years. Sophia's extraordinary classroom performance, not even to mention her performances on the stage of the fine arts department. She dances, she plays the viola, stands in such sharp and almost shocking contrast to her modest, humble, and unassuming nature. She provides incredible leadership through her obvious talents and achievements, as well as her inclusive and winning personality, and her peers are inevitably drawn towards her great light. Her contributions to my classes are immeasurable, and I am so disappointed knowing that our time together ends with the changing of semesters. Sophia is so richly deserving of our district's highest accolades. He wanted to continue, but I had to cut it off. It is lovely to be able to reward an excellent student for academic achievement. It is even more wonderful to recognize a student who compares such excellence with wisdom. In that spirit, Sophia Vincent is a true representative of Maine West and District 207's Best."
Sophia, can you introduce who's with you here tonight?
I'm with my mom and my dad.
Great. And can you talk about future plans?
I don't know which school I'm going to yet, but public health is definitely my major.
Congratulations to all of our students and their proud parents. And this is your opportunity to go ahead and have a photo taken with your principals. And you're welcome to rejoin the meeting if you'd like, but please don't feel like you're not. Do we have any public comments? I don't think I see any cards. Hearing no public comments, next up is the Schuler Scholar Annual Presentation. Hello, hello.
Hello, everybody. Can y'all hear me okay, or do you want me to kind of come into the U a little bit?
Yeah, you can come forward.
You want me to step in a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Nice to see everyone. Happy New Year. Thank you for having me again. It's always a joy to come and give y'all a little bit of an update on what we've been up to in the Schuler Program this year. Slides are there if you're... Oh, I'll be behind me. No, just up there for you. So just a reminder of the mission of the Schuler Scholar Program. It is to equip high-achieving and underrepresented students to gain access to and succeed at highly selective colleges and beyond. And we've been around since 2001, but we've been specifically at Maine East since 2010. And as always today, I'm going to just give you a little bit of an update on each of our three major organizational goals. Scale: serving as many qualified students as we can. Retention: keeping as many students as possible in our program successfully to the end. And then, third, college attainment. So supporting students in getting into those top selective schools that can give them the best need-based financial aid and amazing academic and professional experiences. So starting with scale, last year, we accepted 20 new students into the Schuler Program. That is a slight decrease compared to years past. There was a little bit of a challenge getting data from Gemini to Maine East. My understanding is the schools have fixed that for this year, and that I don't anticipate that there will be any challenge moving forward to recruitment, but I do think that slightly impacted our numbers and our ability to do individual outreach to students. This year, we started the year serving 91 students at Maine East. Turning to retention, our overall retention trends continue to be positive. We're keeping more and more students in our program for the whole four years and beyond. We think there's a number of things that contribute to that, including implementing culturally-sustaining pedagogy, family collaboration, being really consistent in working with parents and connecting with them to support their student success, and then also being proactive and implementing tiered academic support. So pushing in individualized support as needed versus a one-size-fits-all approach. For the handful of students who were withdrawn from our program last year, they fall into two categories. A few students were in the situation where they were consistently not meeting those academic requirements of the program that they need to meet in order to stay on track, to earn acceptance into those selective schools. And then there were also a couple of students who self-withdrew from the program. That can happen because students maybe along the way realize their college goals no longer align with a specific Schuler mission anymore, for example. So those are the two categories of withdrawals that we saw last year. And the rate of withdrawals that we saw are very much par for the course as far as what we would see on a typical year. And when we think about retention, one thing we often look at is academic support and success, and what are the academic areas that our students are facing the greatest challenges in? So you can see we've identified last year by grade band which are the academic subjects or courses that our students tend to struggle the most in. And when we identify those subjects, what we do is we work to really work closely and collaborate with the teachers and department chairs to understand more about the class, more about the schedule, and to understand how we, with our time with students, can best amplify, echo what the teachers are doing in the classroom. So what strategies and resources are they directing students to that we can return to with the students and really kind of put in hold? Just an interesting note, when we provide academic support, we are not primarily providing content tutoring. Instead, we do what's called academic coaching. So we're focusing on helping students develop skills that cut across courses and disciplines, so things like executive skills, study skills, self-advocacy skills. However, if a student is demonstrating that they are consistently struggling with content in a particular area, we will provide them with virtual tutoring that they can schedule at a time that works for them. Looking at college attainment, here we have the list of colleges that Maine East Schuler Scholars from the class of 2023 are now attending as freshmen. So some wonderful institutions on this list, some of which are local, like Northwestern and University of Chicago, and many of which are not local, like MIT, University of Rochester, Carleton, LaMonah. So we're really excited about our Maine East Schuler seniors, or I guess now freshmen in college, and all they're achieving at their institutions. In fact, four of them were actually just back at Maine East today, talking with some of our freshmen and sophomores and sharing their experience, and they're doing really well. Another important piece of information that we look at when it comes to college is financial aid, because that's really one of the reasons we're excited to help students attend these selective schools, is because they can give some of the strongest need-based financial aid to students, particularly who are pell-eligible. So last year, for that class of 2023 Maine Schuler students, the average amount of non-lone financial aid awarded to Maine Schuler Scholars is, on average, over $73,000 a year. So that's $73,000 a year in free money that they do not have to pay back, and that's renewable for each of four years. So that is a number that gets me really excited. That's what this is all about, is having... That's what this is all about, is having our students able to go on to get a great education and to not go into debt. When students are in college and beyond, we continue to stay connected and provide a variety of supports. For example, we have a handful of small scholarships and grants that we provide. We do resume workshops. We have transitioned to college programming in the spring and in the summer before students start college. So we're certainly not as hands-on with students in college as we are in high school, but we very much do stay connected and provide supports to support them along the way to be successful in college and that important beyond. And speaking of alumni, this is just a small sample of some of the jobs that Maine East Schuler Scholars are currently holding. I could have made the list a lot longer, but this is just a highlight of a few. So it's really exciting to see some of the great things that our students are doing in their professional lives. We have students in medical school. We have folks who are doing aerospace engineering. We have software engineers at Google. We have folks practicing law. We have folks getting into social organizing. There's so many amazing things our students are doing. That's really what it's all about, is helping students become the leaders of our future, or rather, our present at this point. Just a couple of updates to share with you about what we are focusing on in our program at Maine East this year, a couple adjustments we are making. One thing is that we are really focusing on amping up our support for AP US History. We know that the Social Science Department has made an adjustment in curriculum, which means that AP US History is a course that many juniors are taking, but also many sophomores are taking. So about half of our current students are taking AP US History right now, which is a pretty difficult course. And so we have been really collaborating with the department chair and the teachers in AP US History. We provided a summer workshop to support students in getting ready for that course. And all year, we've been also providing a weekly after-school study group for AP US History. A second thing that we're focusing on this year is pushing in more college counseling touchpoints for some of our underclassmen. And one example of that is, for the first time this year, we took our sophomores on a college visit to Lake Forest College. It was a great success. Students had a really wonderful time and had good questions, and also were able to connect with Schuler Scholars on Lake Forest campus and hear about their own experiences and how they've built community at their college. So really exciting things happening there. And I can never come before you and miss the opportunity to just say how much we appreciate the collaboration we get from everyone, from administrators to staff, to teachers, to coaches and club sponsors at Maine East. We really couldn't ask for a better environment to be a partner with. I also have really enjoyed getting to know some of the newer leaders in the building this year a little bit and look forward to continuing that collaboration. Also, we know that Maine East has been really focusing on a couple key goals this year: Mission Elevate and Mission Engage. So really focusing on rigor and sense of belonging, and those are goals that are really important to the Schuler program as well. So I'm excited about the work that Maine East is doing along those lines, and we're excited to continue to partner and share ideas and learn from Maine East around those goals as well. The last thing I have to share for you is an important update around the Schuler program at large. This is not Maine East specific, but it is about Schuler across all of our dozen or so partner schools. So we are experiencing some financial constraints at this point. And so what we are going to need to do is make some shifts to think about how we can achieve our same mission, but do it in a more cost-effective way. So our mission is not changing, and we remain committed as ever to our mission, but we need to think about how we can adjust our model or approach to do so in the most impactful but cost-effective way. So there are a couple changes that we're making for this academic year. One is that we will not be selecting new students for this year in any partner high school in the Schuler program. We hope that in a later year, we'd be able to provide an opportunity for students from the class of 2028, so our current eighth graders, to apply, perhaps when they're freshmen or sophomores. We don't have those details worked out yet, but that is very much our hope, is that we'd be able to provide that group of students an opportunity at a later time. But for this year, we have to pause our selection of new students. The second change is that some of you may be aware that typically every summer, we take our students who just wrapped up freshman year to a leadership camp in Wisconsin. It's kind of an iconic Schuler program. This year, this summer, we will not be going to that leadership camp. We will be running other summer programs, like our college visits all over the country, but the leadership camp program is on pause for the summer as well. In the months ahead, really in this next semester, the Schuler Leadership Team is going to be working to really take a deep dive and reimagine what our most effective program model can look like. And then our goal is to be able to share that with you all and roll that out for academic year twenty-four, twenty-five. So I don't have the specific details of exactly what adjustments might happen for the future yet, but as soon as we do, we'll make sure to share those out with y'all. So that is what I have for today. What questions are coming up for folks?
Who are you getting funding?
Yes, good question. So we are funded by Jack Schuler, hence the name Schuler Scholar Program. Jack Schuler is a wealthy businessman who lives in northern suburbs. Education has always been important to him, so when he made his fortune in business, he wanted to invest it back in education. So we are funded through a foundation that's privately funded by him and the stock is linked to his businesses. And as the stock market has struggled in the last few years, there's been a devaluation there. Other questions coming up?
What's the budget when we talk about the Schuler white programs? And you want to be rough for me?
Yeah, you know, that has changed year to year, so I hesitate to throw a number out at this point. But I mean, certainly multiple millions of dollars each year. There's a large investment in each student. If you think we are serving ninety-one students, we provide college scholarships, we provide trips to visit colleges, the leadership camps, the staff to support folks. So it is a pretty major investment in students, for sure. But the specific number, I couldn't quote for you at this point.
Because as you mentioned, those are so important, successful projects, programs that we've been running for many years. And we are so impressed about how this program has been run. And it's really sad to see, because of the financial constraints, that you have to cut down those items, including that no selection of new scholars strictly.
Absolutely.
Or no leadership camp, and so on. Is there any possible other way, have you consulted with maybe district or members to get a financial support of some kind, and/or other outside fundraising, or any possible?
Yeah, at this point, we are not pursuing any additional funding coming in. What we're really focusing on is evaluating what's most effective in the programs at the time so that we can come up with a sustainable model, right? That's, I think, really our goal, is not to kind of patch something for a year or a short term, but really evaluate, you know, we've been operating for many, many years. And as is sometimes the case, when you operate for many, many years, you do a lot of things because they're effective. Maybe you do some things just because you've always done them that way. And I think we are seeing this as an opportunity to really evaluate what is really impactful for our students, and then how can we make sure that we center that and protect that in a model that is financially sustainable for the long term. So at this point, we're not looking for any additional funding. We're looking at evaluating our program structures for effectiveness.
I guess that is a good strategic way of seeing and visioning of such. But when you mentioned about no selection of new scholars, is this the first time, first every year that we are not doing this?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's the first year since Schuler has existed that we have not selected students into the program.
When do you anticipate your report back? Would it be in a year or?
So we will know what we're doing for the fall and the summer, for sure. And I'll certainly be in close communication with Melissa about that. And as y'all are interested in more specific updates, I'm happy to share that with the board as well. But Melissa will be my go-to for specific updates as we get those details.
You can get that through. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Update from superintendent?
Okay, just a couple other things. Really, first of all, kudos to building a really good, successful first semester, and we are ready to ramp up second semester. And just as the universe would have that, weather becomes an issue in Chicago at this time. So met with the elementary superintendents today. Just a reminder to the board, we will try not to take the traditional snow days with just out of school. We would pivot probably just to e-learning days. The way that we do it, we work with our five public elementary districts, and we have pretty much always all been in together or all been out together. It poses different challenges for the elementary districts than it does us. We are very well-equipped to shift to e-learning. The elementary districts aren't always as well-equipped, so we try to do that. What we do with our families is just remind them, you know, the kids, take home your phone books. And same thing for staff. And when you remind them, and you don't call off school, however, sometimes that generates some angry emails. But we try to actually see the conditions and look at the National Weather Service and things like that. So just a reminder to the board that we're getting into that season now, so we may be making some weather-related calls.
Thank you. Any updates from board members?
Just have a quick greetings to everyone for Happy New Year. This is a year of dragon. Very excited. I guess people who are born nineteen fifty-two, nineteen sixty-four, nineteen seventy-six, nineteen eighty-eight, two thousand, two thousand twelve, and so on. Well, everyone have a great year and wishing you a heart and wonderful New Year to everyone. And I'm very excited, as I mentioned, our sister school, International School. So we have two weeks left for that nineteen students, first time visiting United States, Chicago land, Maine township. I'm so very excited, and thank you so very much for the leadership of our superintendent and the principals having hosting a wonderful experience for these new students, visitors from our sister city, international students. And I'm really looking forward to, especially these years, we should really open our minds for the students to really into an international, global educational experience, whenever we can, however we can. And I think this opportunity truly gives them opportunities. So as we are starting first time with South Korea as a sister city, international school relationships, we hope to expand that to other Asia, other Europe, South America, and so on continuously, so that future of our education leaders, the students could able to come and see what a wonderful our American educational culture system that we have, how proud we are, and so on. And I'm looking really forward to and excited to share what a beautiful schools, our American school systems, the host family experience. Those are truly are welcome. And I think this will be a great opportunity for these nineteen students who are coming in two weeks. So thank you so very much, and hopefully anybody who may have time during their visit to stop by and just welcome them will be greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I do want to just welcome Dr. Boonam, our incoming superintendent, to her first meeting as a visitor. Thank you, and the reception was very nice. Appreciate everyone being there for that. Okay, moving on to the finance committee update.
Sure. Finance committee was held on December eighteenth. Members present were myself, Dean Patrice, and Sheila Joseph Iverson. We was called to order at five PM and there were no public comments. First item we talked about was the audit services. The RFP for audit services was mailed to seven firms. District received one response from Akizian, who has performed our audit for the test papers. Akizian has experience in industry standards, and the audit team is rotated to ensure audit activity. District is happy with those services and recommends awarding a three-year contract through the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We also discussed the memorandum of understanding with Advocate Medical Group. The standing MOU with Advocate was revised to include the school-based health center at Maine West. Graduation pictures were discussed. The RFP was conducted for commencement pictures. The administration recommends awarding a three-year contract to VIP as the prices and packages offered were most compatible with our request for graduation ceremony pictures. Vending and beverage contracts were also discussed. The district left the exclusive beverage contract with Pepsi in twenty-one due to booster organizations not using Pepsi products as they could purchase other products at lower costs. However, Pepsi is proposing a five-year contract, giving District two oh seven twenty-eight thousand dollars, of which two thousand will go to each of the school's booster organizations. The remaining twenty-two thousand will be used for summer athletic camps for students on fee waivers. Boosters are in agreement with the recommendations. Pepsi contracts with Yami vending for stocking the vending machines, and Yami will give us incentives of three thousand dollars through Pepsi and additional one thousand each year, which will be used to support student activities. We discussed cap and gown. We received five responses to the RFP lowest bidder for sustainable cap and gowns. The lowest bidder was not responsive, and the second lowest bid was from Worldwide Gear Versity Products. The communication from the vendor has been good, and the district recommends a one-year contract with an option to renew two or three, depending on the customer service and quality. Another item, talked about a lot of things, the secondary school cooperative risk management insurance renewal. So the district is a member of SCRAM, of the SCRAM pool, along with several other districts, and it was a challenging claim period over the last few years because of three separate fires. However, outside those large claims, the property claims have been below seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. SCRAM requested an increase to the self-insured retention to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but further discussion agreed to leave it to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But we've got to be aware that it is most likely to increase in the future. D two oh seven has an option to purchase a higher level of cyber coverage. With our use of multi-factor authentication for Google accounts in our servers, the risk is reduced. And the technology team is in discussions about those coverage needs. The twenty-four, twenty-five budget parameters and timeline was discussed. The biggest challenges for twenty-four, twenty-five budget are the multilingual language program and transportation. The CBA does have good metrics for salary increases, and medical benefits are stable. The budget has built in seven million dollars annually for facility improvements following the referendum. Where new staffing costs will range between one and two million. And the goal is for a balanced budget, and it is predicted that next year we will be in good shape to accomplish it. Property tax refunds were also discussed. The annual report gives us feedback on PTAP progress comparing preserved revenue to requested refunds. The district actually has a really high return on interventions, preserving sixty-one percent on what is requested. We began intervening at the Board of Review in two thousand and eighteen. The Board of Review has been receptive to settlements prior to the finalization of property tax bills, so refunds are not created. District tracks refunds greater than five thousand dollars, and refund requests can go back ten years. Final item we discussed was InTouch Bookstore and Online Point-of-sale Sales Systems. The district is recommending a contract with InTouch for all fee payment and bookstore point-of-sale processing. Year one will focus on the transition of bookstore purchases and fee processing. Afterwards, onboarding will begin for the rest of the online sales. No further business. I had come before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned at five forty-one PM.
Thank you. Very busy meeting.
Yes.
Okay, Buildings and Grounds update. Terry?
Okay. Meeting of Buildings and Grounds was held on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Members present were Linda Coyle, Jin Lee. And the meeting was called to order at five forty-one PM. No public comments. The first item on the agenda was masonry and tuck pointing contracts, Maine East and Maine West. Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Dave Holm, identified the areas in East and West needing tuck pointing and masonry work. Bids were open last month, were multiple responses for each building. In addition to tuck pointing, the East project consists of removing foundation, plantings, and regrading. The engineering firm underestimated the cost of replacement gravel. The engineering firm underestimated the cost of replacement gravel, and grading results in the lowest bid coming in over budget by $14,000. At West, masonry work was needed where the wings are attached to the building. Due to difficulty accessing the repair area, a more labor-intensive install of scaffolding is needed, resulting in the lowest bid eclipsing the budget estimate by $19,400. A full scope review was performed. The district recommends awarding the contracts to A1 Group Limited for the East project in the amount of $489,000, and for the West project in the amount of $494,400. There being no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 5:50 PM.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, we'll move along to monthly status of finances. Mary is not present this evening, and Ken will be.
So Terry, little thank you, there's a number of items on the agenda tonight that are queued up, but Linda and Terry did a really good job of talking through those things and how they were covered at the various committee meetings. We are tracking within budget. The thing that we are struggling with right now, and we always struggle with, is just the coming in of the tax receipts. But as we get that, we believe we're going to fall within line and track very well this year. As I said, we've got a number of items coming up here on the agenda for passage that really were discussed at the committee meetings, and Linda and Terry have talked about pretty much all of them just.
Okay. Do we go into the? No budget and script?
Yes, so the budget parameters, SCREM renewal, the property tax refunds, those are going to be covered in finance on January 22nd. So we're going to go back and review all those, and then Mary anticipates coming back with a mid-year budget update at that time.
Okay. Okay. All right, instructional services, nothing? Okay. Monthly update on employee requests, Ken?
Two this month, and they've both been responded to.
Okay. Could I have a motion on the consent agenda? Item 7A through E. Jenny, would you take the role? Collins?
I have to stay for a minute. The minutes from the end. Because I wasn't here on the fourth.
So just the fourth of staying in the world?
Yeah, I was here for everything else except for the fourth, so I don't know. I don't want to have to call out every single thing, so.
Is it okay for you?
Yeah.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Captain, stand on the floor this morning.
Okay. Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. I have a motion on items. Let's do A and B. A and B, sorry.
Second.
These were Mary's items that were brought over and on the cap and gown and on the graduation pictures. Are there any questions on those? Just cover that finance. If there are none, you take your role. Iker?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
That motion on item 8C.
Second.
This is on audit services. I'm just going to do some of these separately so we can ask questions if we want. Any questions on the audit services?
And what Mary says is one of the reasons we didn't get bidders is that we're one of the few districts that actually had an audit completed in time. So we just, the rest of them, they're still finishing under our arms. And this is our incumbent provider that we're very happy to.
It's a clear.
Yep.
Any questions? Would you take the role? Patrice?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
That motion on item 8D. This is a five-year contract, that's a 10.
Just a question related to, just curiosity, especially for the drinking vending machine supply, Pepsi, which is all good and so on, but like a Pepsi company would give us, the district, $28,000 per se commissions, traditionally, annually, and then we distribute that to them. And then Yami, the company who's handling the delivery service, that would give us $5,000 and so on. So this is fantastic, great to see a commission from, but at the same time, my curiosity is, when business offer a such a commission, would they possibly arising the cost of our expense, the purchasing price? So we pay, we buy a little higher price, and then they give us a commission, and then we take that to the kind of like whatever the activities of commerce.
The price is going up with the items that they're purchasing?
That too, but at the same time, isn't it wiser strategically, maybe better for the student and our district, say, well, not get the commission, but able to reduce, buy a lower price so that it can benefit the school and students possibly?
Well, the commission is actually going to scholarships for summer school camps, so that's what we've used it for traditionally, so it goes to a really, really good purpose.
That's fantastic deal, but.
And frankly, Jen, it's an area in the grand scheme of our budget, it's such a small dollar item. I don't know how much in the weeds we'd want to get into it in terms of trying to manage the Pepsi machines.
And if I could add something, that Mary went to the boosters, and each booster group gets $2,000, and what they had been doing was purchasing their own drinks and trying to get the profit off that, and they're in agreement that this is good for the groups.
So what I'm just trying to say is that whenever we see a purchasing contract, agreement with XYZ companies, industries, and so on, and we made a contract, and we are paying whatever XYZ, and then we do get a sometimes very nice hefty commission that goes to all the goodwill, which perfectly fine, but at the same time, I'm just kind of concerned that we are not just paying, you know, that extra, if we could have liked a dollar, but because of this, if we have to pay dollar 25 or dollar 50, you know, I don't know if that's strategically very economically, business-wise, all the beneficial for us and for the students, for the communities and so on. So hopefully, Mary and everyone is very cautious about doing such a deal.
She had to get a bunch of the booster clubs on board with this, because they opted out of this, so I'm going to trust that the fact that she got them on board, that they're in agreement with this.
Well, thank you.
All right. Jenny, would you take the role? Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
That motion on item 8E, this is the revised MOU for Advocate.
Second.
Someone second it? So this is revising that agreement to include the school-based health center at Main West, which is exciting, very exciting. Any questions on this? And that's going to open in February?
February 1st is the target opening, right? That's great, that's exciting.
Yeah, that's great.
Wonderful, very exciting. Okay, if there's no questions, would you take your role? Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
That motion on item 8P.
Sorry.
It's on the new system, yeah, it's going to be used. I know, I know I've heard there's been problems in the past.
This is something I know Mary and the business office have worked on for a couple of years, and it's combining the point-of-sale system together, both the online sales and the bookstore, so it's going to be a great, great service to our families. Have a combined system, and Mary's talked about this and worked on this. This rectifies a problem that we've had between collecting cash and accepting credit cards, and so this will also speak with our student information system, which is where we keep our obligations in that way, parents can see what they owe or what they paid. So this is really streamlining.
Yeah, pulling things under one umbrella, right?
When I was in town, parents used to ask me, why can't I pay online? Now we'll be able to say, hey, we can pay online.
Right, and there's an upfront cost here, but then it, you know, that's just the $35,000.
The implementation setup cost.
Right, right. It seems to make good sense to me. I know it's been looked into. Any other questions on this? Okay, Jenny? Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee, I'm sorry, Iker?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
That motion on item 8G.
Second.
This is the masonry work that Terry mentioned. Any questions on this? Okay, Jenny? Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
That motion on item nine, this is a facility fee waiver, this is one we've done before for Concordia University or Main West classroom.
Second.
Stefan, man, anything new on this? Same as in the past?
No, same old.
Any questions? Okay, would you take the role? Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Owen? Calendar items are listed here. I don't think there's any additions to this. No. Okay, could I have a motion to go into closed session for review of closed session minutes? Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, could I have a motion to return to open session?
So you move.
Jenny? Lee?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
That motion on items 14A through C as appended. A through C, I'm doing.
There is, I'm doing it, sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay, okay.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Yeah.